Good morning and welcome to the sixth meeting of the Honorable Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for our commission reporter. If you're here to testify, please come forward and be sworn in and identify yourself. Uh commissioners, I see we have some minutes.
Yes Chair, uh motion to approve the minutes of the twenty ninth and the third meetings as previously circulated. Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The minutes of the twenty ninth and the third meeting are approved. Moving into the public hearing, agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one four one eight two from Ulsan Food Service Hawaii LLC, Mr. Nikoba.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Commissioners, Devin Nikoba representing uh Ulsan Foods LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters of support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one four one eight two, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one four one eight two is approved.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Nikoba.
Thank you. Moving into license application, special license application, agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one four eight eight six from Friends of Kaleo Hawaii Media.
Good afternoon, Mr.
Good afternoon, Chair.
My name is Jason Park, J A S O N P A R K. I'm on hearing uh appearing on behalf of Senator Duarte, who's in New York right now. I'm an authorized agent, uh authorized to appear on behalf of Friends of Kaleo Hawaii. Could answer any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Second, Commissioner?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, why should I?
Um what is the mission of your nonprofit?
For the Friends of Hawaii. Okay, so the uh in a nutshell, the mission is to create an all Hawaiian uh based uh radio station within the next couple of years. So like in Hawaii, we have a, you know, we have like a Filipino uh radio station, uh but there there is no like all Hawaiian speaking radio station and the mission is to create that within the next two years.
Okay, um and how long has this nonprofit been um operating?
Um it it's upwards of five years. Senator Duarte, who is the uh he is the uh secretary, uh he has that information, but it's a but it's about over five years uh in the making. Um the board consists of uh radio uh veterans uh who all kind of have a statement kind of uh uplifting the mission of the Friends of Kaleo.
Okay, and um what percentage of the proceeds from this event are gonna be going towards the Friends of Kaleo Hawaii?
Sure, sure. We have a guarantee plus it's a seventy thirty split.
Oh, okay, good. And the proceeds are gonna be used for?
For the mission, uh for to establish the the online and the terrestrial radio station, which is kind of over their area. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have any other questions or type of action?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one four eight eight six, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one four eight eight six is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
On agenda item number three, preliminary hearing, application number one eight dash one four two one three from Waikiki Snapper, Mr. Keuch.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. Keith Keuch for the applicant, to my right is Kayan Fashani, who's one of the pastors and directors of the applicant. I've read the investigator report. Um I agree with the investigator that the outside noise containment is poor. We do not intend to do live entertainment outside for that reason.
Okay, Commissioners? Can we hold on just a minute? What if on page uh?
It's exhibit C is the investigator's noise evaluation.
Commissioners, would you please review that? So my question would be, Mr. Keuch, what do you intend to do?
We're not gonna have any live entertainment outside.
Outside?
Yeah.
That's the remedy?
Yeah, that's the, the issue is outside because this is the old Snapper's Waikiki space and it's completely open air. There's no walls around, no s- no ceiling, so that's why he's got the noise containment spore. So we're, that's to to do live entertainment out outside would just wouldn't be right.
So, Mr. Keuch, the outdoor area with without any containment is this portion right here that says lanai?
Yeah, that's correct.
The rest of this stuff is all included?
It's all inside and it's pretty well insulated inside.
Do you do you intend to have any seating outside?
There is seating outside. We intend to have people sit outside. We don't intend to have music outside.
Would I have a type of action, please?
Motion to approve the application number one eight dash one four two one three, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number three, application number one eight dash one four two one three is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to agenda item number four. Uh application number one eight dash one four two nine two from Waikiki Restaurant LLC. Ms. Cole, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole. On behalf of the applicant, present to my right is authorized agent Lance Willehelm, spelled W I L H E L M. We have no changes to investigative report.
Very good, Commissioner, this is a preliminary hearing.
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one four two nine two, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one eight at one four two nine two is approved. Let's take agenda item number seven out of order. It's a related issue. Calling agenda item number seven, this is a temporary license application. Application that number one nine dash one four six seven one from Waikiki Restaurant LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole. On behalf of the applicant, present to my right is authorized agent Lance Willehelm. Um the only change we'd like to request is that it be effective as of September fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve temporary application number one nine dash one four six seven one to be effective September fifth. Okay, Commissioners, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one four six seven one is approved effective September seventh?
September fifth.
September first?
Fifth.
Fifth, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back uh on the agenda to agenda item number five, application number one eight dash one four three three seven from Grace and Growers LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole. On behalf of the applicant, present to my right is husband and wife owners Tim and Holly Bellings, spelled B E L I N G. We have no changes to investigative report.
Thank you, Commissioners?
Yes, I have um Ms. Cole, a question about the exterior area and how that is actually defined.
Yes, the exterior is similar to um Keith Keuch's application where they have both the interior, which is surrounded by walls. The entertainment is only gonna be on the interior side. Um the exterior will have no entertainment, no live music, no guests.
Are there any sort of planners or anything around it?
Yes, yes, there's gonna be uh removable walls, which surround it and basically contain the outside space.
Okay.
So, I I'm familiar with the space, um exterior, so there's gonna be removable walls, you said?
Removable walls, right, so we could.
Is that outside like walkway area? That's a lanai. Cause you folks are.
There's also the lanai, which is the outside area, and there's also the common area. And the common area is the part where they're gonna be, it's gonna be contained with the removable walls, so they can move the walls um in and out.
And that's not a shared space you fo- that is your leased premises? You don't share it with any of the other tenants of that building? Or we have exclusive premises?
Where on the uh plan does it identify the outdoors?
The outdoors, the planters, the removable walls?
Uh no, I see the planters. You said removable wall?
It's the planters.
They say that it's like a planter on one side and.
Oh, oh, okay, I misunderstood. Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any further questions or type of law? Action?
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one four three three seven, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number five, application number one eight dash one four three three seven is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Calling agenda item number six, application number one eight dash one four four nine five from Vice DIA Fish Market.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, greatly show up appearing on behalf of the applicant. Uh I previously give the hearings reporter the spelling of Mr. Edward Dottis' name, who is the authorized agent. We have received the report of investigator Homo Tomofor. Have no conditions corrections to make.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Motion to approve application number one eight dash one four four nine, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh application number one eight dash one four four nine five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. On agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one four seven one eight from Super Best Market LLC.
To my right is Tim He, H E, he is president of council Wayne. We have no changes to investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one four seven one eight, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one four seven one eight is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Luke, moving on to agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one four seven six one from Kauai Loa Tavern LLC.
I'm gonna stand up, that's okay.
Yeah, it makes us nervous if you could.
Please, please have a seat.
Please have a seat.
Oh, uh are you? Uh did you take a little uh?
Oh, okay.
Well, let's go ahead and.
That's a different, that's, we can't see you from down from up here, so.
Yeah, we didn't notice that.
Yep. He didn't pay all his legal fees, so we had to get after his kneecaps.
Feel free to stand.
Uh thank you, um Commissioners, Michael Sweetman for the applicant Kauai Loa Tavern LLC. Um standing to my left is owner and manager Jason Paz, last name is P A Z.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action for the applicant?
Motion to approve uh temp application number one nine dash one four seven six one, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one four seven six one is approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let's move on to agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one four nine zero for Mr. Ross Shinzato on behalf of Rumus Spear LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Ross Shinzato, authorized agent for Debbie Eichelberger, who's a agent for Rumus Spear LLC.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shinzato.
Uh motion to approve request number one nine dash one four nine zero two, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one four nine zero two is approved. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Nice to see you both. Okay, um Ms. Reed, please come forward. Uh agenda item number eleven, this is a review uh post-exam report on uh the event of Saturday, July seventh, two thousand eighteen by the Arts Cultural Merchants.
Yes.
Nonprofit.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Nicole Reed, R E I D, Secretary of Treasure for the Arts Culture Merchant Sector Group.
Thank you very much. Can we hear from uh Enforcement, please?
Acting Supervising Investigator, Scott Perez, for Enforcement.
Thank you. Are you familiar with this event?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to invite the commission or there was any incidents or?
So, there is a noise complaint from uh next door partners, but not specifying the event itself. Other than that, nothing.
What was the complaint for?
Next door partners for noise.
But not directed directly towards the nonprofit event?
Yes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Were there any violations, Mr. Reed?
There was a violation for against proof public house. They removed alcohol from the licensed premises into the street. That's the only, other than that, there is no violations directly related to the event itself.
Ms. Reed, would you like to comment?
Um I'm happy there was no incident. Glad to know.
Okay, thank you for coming. No action, if you'd like, right?
No action.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Reed. Commissioners, can I have a type of action for agenda items number twelve through fifteen inclusive?
Motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items twelve through fifteen inclusive, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I vote aye, the adoption of decision and order, agenda items number twelve through fifteen inclusive. Let's move into the adjudication hearing.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Members of the Commission, and Ms. Reed, Deputy Corporation Counsel Monica Choi on the record for the prosecution on all adjudication matters on today's agenda from items uh sixteen through twenty four.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number sixteen, Club Roxa.
The licensee for Club Roxa wishes to continue to the next available date, and I have no objection.
Thank you.
Would you like to continue agenda item sixteen, Club Roxa, to the next available date, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number sixteen is continued to the next available date. Thank you. Calling agenda item number seventeen, Cindy's Place. Cindy's Place?
Could you introduce yourself? Ma'am, what is your name?
Kathy.
Kathy, your full name and study?
Yeah, I think it's something.
I'm sorry?
S Y X O M P, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Honor about August thirty first, two thousand seventeen, and during the period from August thirty first, two thousand seventeen to September twelfth, two thousand seventeen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to submit the name of every person then employed on the license premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point eight of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ma'am, would you like to admit the allegations, deny the allegations, or plead no contest to the allegation? I'm sorry?
Eh, eh.
Eh. Motion to accept the plea, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The agenda item number seventeen, uh the uh admittance to the violation is accepted.
Ms. Choi, uh this is a second time violation for failing to submit the annual employee list. Uh we did submit a, or sent, I'm sorry, a reminder letter on July fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, and then a second reminder on August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen to have the licensee submitted by August thirty first, and to date, we haven't received the list yet. And I'm sorry, my recommendation is that the fine be three hundred fifty dollars.
Ma'am, did you receive the notices?
I must have misplaced.
Do you have a list that you are prepared to submit?
Not that I see.
Um so we're showing that you have not, you have still not submitted a list of uh every person employed at your licensed premises. When can you get that to us?
Is there anywhere I can get a copy of?
No, you need to submit a list of all of your employees to us.
She can request a copy of what we currently have on file and make the remarks. If you could just put that in uh your your penalty recommendation.
Oh, yes. So I just recommend that, uh as this is a second time violation, a fine of three hundred fifty dollars as well as an updated list of the employees registered with Cindy's Place.
Within what time period?
Uh within fifteen days of the service of the decision and order. Sorry, thank you.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars and licensee will submit a list of registered employees to the commission within fifteen days of service of the decision and order, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote uh agenda item number seventeen, the uh recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars is approved and um the licensee will submit a list of all employees within fifteen days of the commission.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, King's Sports Bar and Grill.
Good afternoon, my name is Penny Silva, P E N Y S I L V A. I took just over the da- that time.
Ma'am, we're gonna have to meet the charges.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should we reading of the charge? Yeah. Okay.
Okay. How would you like to plead, admit, deny, or no contest?
Uh I wanted to make myself clear that I came in and.
We 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 can get through that afterwards, but you need to enter a plea. So admit to the allegations, deny the allegations, or no contest to the allegations.
Ammit.
Motion to accept the plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, I vote uh agenda item number eighteen, the admittance of the violation is approved.
Ms. Choi, your recommendation?
This is a third time violation. I recommend a fine of three hundred dollars. And uh the list that was just recent, well, not just recently turned in, but turned in approximately thirteen days after it was due on September thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. The licensee had been sent reminders on July fifteenth and August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
It is open now, but let us know what's going on.
Okay, when I just took over, they didn't have the key for the mailbox, so I couldn't open the mailbox. And then same time, the landlord was selling the uh the place. So I couldn't get in touch with the owner, cause he's from the landlord from the Kawai. So anyway, I got the key after the end of the September. And then when the liquor commissioner came over to my place and he mentioned it to me about this. So I said, oh, okay, then I'm gonna go right away. So right next day, I came in, uh write down and give him the lease.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so we can expect that this year, you're gonna be on time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake and I need to correct myself. It's a third violation. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars. I apologize.
Actually, I meant the.
All right. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number eighteen, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you, good luck.
Let's move on to agenda item number nineteen, Club Niner Four.
To my right is the owner, Chan, C H U N E Y E, Goldman, G O L D M A N E. She is president of council Wayne Luke, uh wave reading on the charges, a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
它被 second dollars in favor?
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number nineteen, no contest plea is accepted.
Uh this is a first time violation for having three Nexus gaming machines on the premises without authorization by the liquor commission.
And these specific machines, if uh the licensee had applied to with the commission to get permission to use them, would they be permitted?
Uh well, this is not a issue of illegal or legal um gambling. It's just that they didn't re- they didn't receive prior authorization. However, they did try to apply for authorization, but they've been denied it.
So they you, they installed the machines?
So they installed machines after they were denied?
Yes, it was on the premi- Um they, they were found to have it on the premises even after it was denied.
After. The, the machines are gone and these were not gambling machines.
But I want, I would like to get clear on this.
Yes.
Your client applied to have these games, uh let me finish.
Yeah.
Your client applied to have these games on her licensed premises and was denied by the commission?
That is correct.
And then installed them in it? Is that correct?
It, it was installed, yeah.
What do you mean it was installed? Was it installed prior and then you guys came to ask for permission?
Yeah.
Or was it installed after you were denied?
Okay, I have the machine, the liquor commission coming. They told me you have to get permit this machine. So I was coming in here, so I wait to get the permit and they say, oh, sorry, you have to take it out this machine, you cannot have a permit. So I just take it out machine, but you know, before I take it out, they come in one more time, so they give me ticket.
Okay, so they were already on the premises?
Then I take it out right away, after he told me.
Then I want to be clear of what happened.
True.
They were already on the premises without permission. You applied to get permission. You were denied and they remained on the premises.
True. They gave her a break, they gave her a break.
Okay, so there I show that you have three Nexus top gaming machines, is that correct?
Yes.
And are there any gaming machines on your premises right now?
No, I don't have any machine right now.
I mean, and that includes in the office? That includes everywhere on the premises?
No.
Okay. Okay, um Ms. Choi, what's your recommendation?
Um for adjudication purposes, it's a first time violation. I recommend a five uh uh fine of five hundred dollars. I, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that on January fifth, two thousand eighteen, they were issued a warning. So they, they were validly warned.
Yeah, they told me go get permit, yeah.
Um I'm gonna, uh my, my motion is to issue a fine of five hundred dollars per machine for a total of one thousand five hundred dollars, second.
它被 second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty, a fine of one thousand five hundred dollars will be imposed on the licensee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty one. Twenty.
Twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's step corrected, agenda item number twenty, Club Niner Four.
Is this you too, Mr. Luke?
Oh yeah, Chinese Goldman owner, president of council Wayne, uh wave reading on charges, enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote I agenda item number twenty.
This is a first time violation for display I mean for storing liquor in a place other than an appro- approved by the liquor commission. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars. In this instance, the liquor was stored in a hallway in a kitchen area that was unlicensed.
Mister Lu. Any comment?
Yes, basically when she took over the premise uh normally when you take over premise the normal situation, they look through the premises to see what's you know what's in there. She took it on a stock uh stock transfer. The stock transfer, you just take the stock, there is no foreplan. Basically, the prior owner went outside of the licensed premise. So she during all this time, she thought that was part of the licensed premise. Until the investigators went in and noticed that they may you know there there was a wall that looked like was knocked down uh which they which they used to you know open this space in the back.
Okay, has the violation been corrected?
Uh she's all the she has her she's gonna all the liquor will be is gonna be taken out.
Yeah.
It is going to be where it has been already.
Oh not yet, I've uh I wanna come today so uh what happening because already I've got their bar yeah, they already have like already they make it like they already have office, they all liquor inside, I thought it's possibly have a like that. But in the liquor commission come and say, oh last person have have here. So that's why I come in here, I was asking that right now right place, I have to move in, that's why I'm not you know take it up yet.
Hmm. So the our administration hands the floor plans for every licensed premises, the way that they're supposed to.
That's correct.
Yeah, he told me.
You can come in and you can request a map of your licensed premises so that you know where and begins and ends.
That's correct.
Oh. Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah. She
That's your responsibility, not ours.
That is correct. She knows that the contest
Yeah. Yeah, now now I get it.
Alright, thank you. Uh my motion is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
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 I vote I agenda item number twenty, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to agenda item number twenty one, Sea Light Park.
Definitely, it was the chair members of the commission, Mr. Robert Wheel, on behalf of Sea Light Park present to my right, Mr. Ulysse S. Quiller, uh first name U L I S E S, last name C U E L L A R. He's the controller. This time like the waiving reading of the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I agenda item number twenty one, the no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Troy.
Uh this is a first time violation for purchasing liquor from other than a licensed wholesaler, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
In this matter, the employee purchased liquor without approval of Sea Light Park. Also, this person is no longer employed by Sea Light Park.
Second.
Um on June first, I personally did training uh for everyone on on the general liquor laws and I emphasize the fact that we can only purchase liquor from a licensed wholesalers.
Thank you, Mr. Willock. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I agenda item number twenty one, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Uh calling agenda item number twenty two, move.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. To my right is Troy Teror Rotua. He's the sole member of the LLC wavering of the charge and a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I agenda item number twenty two, no contest plea is accepted. Mr. Troy.
This is a first time violation for not filing a pool buying agreement. In this situation, the licensee was um obtaining the alcohol from his other establishments. And so we didn't have that on record. I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Uh just to be clear, he was using the liquor from pallet, not from his other establishment. He we got a separate approval from Rio to segregate that inventory, that inventory segregated. So this was the inventory from pallet which he had downtown, which he should have made the same request, he didn't, so.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I agenda item number twenty two, recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number yeah, let me call you agenda item number two. Calling agenda item number twenty three, Chen.
Yes. Mr. Willock. Let's change this to a possible conflict, I'm gonna actually speak my self from agenda items number twenty three and twenty four.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair Keith Kiuchi on behalf of the licensee uh Mr. Bukowski is supposed to be here, but I don't wanna slow this thing up since it's a contested hearing, so he gets here he gets here when he gets here, he's gonna testify.
And you are an authorized agent, correct?
Yeah, I'm an authorized agent, so we can proceed.
Okay. Alright, we can proceed.
Um we're gonna waiving of the charge on twenty three, enter a plea of not guilty.
So you are gonna deny the allegation?
Deny the allegations as to twenty three. Twenty four is
Let's handle one more time.
Number one.
Yeah, well let's just handle that, yeah.
Um Hmm.
No no action is required, correct?
No action, we'll move you to the end of the agenda.
We we are the end of the agenda.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, no we could but let's hear from the prosecutor first.
I have some exhibits, I just wanted to at least preliminarily pass out and then when I am ready to introduce them.
That's fine, and I've seen them and they were they were in the package, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's fine enough because they're
Sure, this is for the next one, let's take
And today I have I'm calling two witnesses.
Okay. Uh Mr. Kiuchi, are we calling anybody?
Yeah, Mr. Bukowski when he gets here.
When he got here.
Yeah.
So uh if he's not here, how can we proceed as a witness?
Well, he would not be able
He would not be able to testify, yeah.
In the near away.
Yeah, you're going to do the whole
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, very good. So uh okay.
Okay.
So the uh exclusionary rule would be in effect. Which I don't think has any effect at all, Mr. Bukowski is a man.
Wait, oh.
Okay, so um
With the commission like two year opening statements or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're we're gonna proceed, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay, he's here. He's also the author, he's also the manager, so he can sit in.
Yes, correct. Then you will, Mr. Bukowski.
Okay, I see you guys being Okay, so Bryson, record flag Bryson Bukowski, he's the manager of the licensee.
Okay, very good. Mr. Troy.
So uh on February first twenty eighteen, our investigators inspected the premises of Champs. And they noticed that there was a live DJ performing amplified music and there were also persons dancing. This is in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty one point two A which is for the uh licensee conducting business out of the class or category that it's licensed for. Here, Champs is a category two restaurant standard class one license. So they're not supposed to have any music or dancing. And so that's why they're in violation.
Afternoon. Mr. Kiuchi.
Yeah, uh Champs is a class one, but they did not have live entertainment that evening. They there was no DJ, there was someone that was at the front um operating a laptop and the laptop uh had a music selection. The uh person that was operating the laptop did not have a microphone, was not announcing the songs. There were two turntables up by the laptop, there were props that were not being used, so there was no DJ in the premises, so our position is there's no live entertainment.
Okay, very good. Can you call me for a second?
Yes, I would like to call investigator Catherine Fontaine.
Please do not look around, I hope she's not here.
Do you swear that the testimony given today's hearing will be true, hold to it for another quarter. Yes, thank you.
Please state your name.
Catherine Fontaine.
And what is your occupation?
Uh liquor control investigator.
And how long have you been employed with the liquor control, I mean liquor commission?
Three years.
Okay. Were you assigned to investigate Champs located at three four five seven Y-Line Avenue in Honolulu, Hawaii?
Yes.
And what prompted this investigation?
Uh complaint came in on our complaint line. An anonymous male was complaining about loud music, low frequency bass coming from Champs and he was also complaining about uh live DJ.
Oh, and when do you remember the date that this person called?
Uh January thirty first. That's amazing.
Did you memorialize this call in writing?
Yes, okay.
Can you tell me what the first pages of this exhibit, what's been marked as exhibit A?
It's a complaint form.
Okay, and is it the one that you filled out on January thirty first?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Is it a fair and accurate copy of the complaint form that you filled out?
Yes.
Okay, and is this complaint form kept in the ordinary course of business at the liquor commission?
Yes.
Was the complaint form signed and dated by you?
Yes.
Okay, and did you conduct an investigation after that?
Yes.
Okay, and what did you con- when did you conduct your investigation?
Um that evening.
About approximately what time?
Approximately ten o'clock.
Okay, and what did you observe?
Um not a whole lot of people there and there was no mu- music or noise coming from the premises.
Okay, and then did you do anything else, like did you follow up thereafter?
Yes, the next night.
Okay, what did you do the next night? That was February first twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Um I went there with my partner and we observed a medium crowd of people outside the premises and there was music coming outside coming from the interior, so we made entry.
Okay, and who was your partner?
Nui Wahiniui.
Okay, and then upon entry, what did you see?
Uh medium to large crowd of uh younger adults. Um loud music party type atmosphere with people dancing and talking very loudly.
Okay, and did you see any um anything else?
Uh we made our way to the Eva Makai corner of the premises and that's where we saw um an entertainer DJ operating um DJ equipment.
Okay. Did the licensee violate any liquor commission rules or statutes?
Yes.
And which rule or statute did the licensee violate?
Three eighty two thirty one point two A
And
conduct of business.
Okay. Now, can you explain a little bit more specifically how the licensee failed to comply with the ru- with this rule?
Uh the licensee is a restaurant general license um category one. And for music and dancing, you need to have a category two.
Okay. Or you mean class two, right?
Right.
Yeah, class two, okay.
Well, they have a class two license.
Yeah, okay. Um did you see any equipment set up for the live DJ?
Yes.
Okay.
Um turntables, um uh laptop um an amplified amplified speaker.
Okay, and how do you know that he was a DJ besides seeing all the equipment?
He was operating the equipment, the equipment appeared to be all plugged in and it was lit up.
Okay, so was he manipulating the music?
Yes, the laptop and the turntable.
And were there any amplified speakers that you saw?
There was.
Okay, did you write a report about this investigation on February first twenty eighteen?
I did.
Okay, can you look at pages two and three of it, what's been marked as exhibit A? Um can you tell me what it is?
This is my report in response to the complaint and my findings.
Okay, and is this a fair and accurate copy of your report to Chief Investigator Nakagawa?
It's has I made a mistake on the date, it should have been Thursday, February first. But it says February second.
I see, so it's just a typographical error?
Correct.
Okay, and is this report kept in the ordinary course of business at the liquor commission?
Yes.
Okay, was this report signed and dated by you?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move exhibit A into evidence at this time.
No objection.
Okay, did all that you testified to occur in the city and county of Honolulu?
Yes.
Okay. And no further questions, I reserve uh Ms. Fontaine for further examination for the
Very good, commissioners, do you have any questions or for witnesses? Witness, excuse me. No question?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Kiuchi.
Um Ms. Fontaine, did you hear any music outside of February first when you
Yes.
From the outside?
Yes.
Was it loud?
I could hear it from the car outside by the curb.
Okay, but your report is incorrect, it's it's you didn't go in on February second, you said you went on February first. Right?
I went in on February first.
Correct. Okay. Um the person you saw at the laptop, did he have a mic in front of him?
I did not notice a mic.
Okay, was he talking to the crowd?
No.
Okay, he was just operating the laptop, right?
The laptop and the turntable.
Did you see him actually operate the turntable?
I did.
What was he doing to operate the turntable?
He was touching it and moving it.
He was touching the turntable?
Yes.
Was he playing any music on the turntable?
I don't know where the where he was playing the music from.
But he was doing the laptop, right?
I I could hear the music coming out of the amplified speaker that was ready from
Okay, you would agree with me that the class one allow class one license allows recorded music, right?
Objection, that was
Well, she testified that she what what the classes of licenses were, so she should know.
We don't allow that.
Answer if you understand the question.
Yeah, um this was amplified recorded music and that's not allowed.
That's not allowed?
No.
So that requires a class two even though class two is a live entertainment that needs to be that is allowed?
Yes.
So you're saying that just because they were playing music, that that violated out of class?
They had an entertainer playing music from an amplified.
You misunderstand the question. Question's very simple, was it the entertainer or was it the music?
It was the combination.
Combination, it's one or the other, was it the entertainer or was it the music?
I won't allow that as an answer because I think the issue is both the amplified as well as
As the entertainer.
as the entertainer.
Okay. Ms. Fontaine, uh do you observe this person say anything at all while you were there?
No.
Did you talk to the manager on the premises when you were there?
Yes.
And what did you tell him?
I told him that we were there in response to a complaint about loud noise, music, uh live DJ.
Is there a reason that's not in your report?
Uh I believe it is.
Okay, that's the conversation with the manager you have where you don't have a date on page three.
I'm sorry, page three or
Of exhibit A.
It it states that I explained that we're there investigating a noise and entertainment company.
Yeah. Yeah, I have nothing for you.
We have a
Do you have any? No, I have no other questions. I'm ready to comment on this.
Okay, cool. Would you like to reply?
Oh, no further questions, of course, please.
No further questions, sorry. So you're rushing. You're
Uh she's the caller, I remember.
Well, I yeah, I I will
I'm sorry, did you say you're going to call another?
I have no further questions unless I have to call her back in rebuttal to whatever questions that may arise.
Are you going to call another one?
Yes, my
Okay, the witnesses are here.
My My next witness is Investigator Nui Wahi Nui.
Do you swear that the testimony given today's hearing will be the truth, hold you to nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Nui Uwahinui.
And what is your occupation?
Investigator, control investigator two.
Okay. For the liquor commission?
Correct.
Okay. And how long have you been employed?
Six years.
Have you, I mean sorry, were you assigned to investigate champs at three four five seven YLI Avenue in Honolulu, Hawaii on February first twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. When did you conduct your investigation or I mean what time?
Approximately twenty two oh nine.
Okay, and did you work with any other investigators?
Yes.
Who did you work with?
Investigator Kathy Fontaine.
Okay, what were you assigned to investigate?
Uh assigned to investigate of auto uh anonymous complaint regarding a live DJ and loud loud music, loud music.
Okay, and did the licensee violate any of the liquor commission rules or statutes?
Yes.
Okay, and which rule or statute did the licensee fail to comply with?
It was Conduct of Business three eighty two thirty one point two A.
Okay.
Out of category.
I see, and how did the licensee fail to comply with this rule?
Using a live DJ.
Okay. How did you know it was a live DJ?
The way the DJ was operating the turntable system and the laptop computer in front of him, the way he manipulated the controls the way he actively controlled the music and I I could just hear the
I see.
Yeah.
Did you observe any um activity in response to the music such as like dancing?
That that I don't recall.
Okay. Um did you write a report about this incident incident?
Yes.
Okay. I have one in front of you has been marked exhibit E, can you tell me what it is?
It's my report.
Okay. And when did you write it?
February first.
Okay, is this a fair and accurate copy of your investigative report?
Yes.
Is this investigative report kept in the ordinary course of business at the liquor commission?
Yes.
Okay, and was this report signed and dated by you?
Yes.
Okay, at this time I'd like to move exhibit B to evidence.
No. No objection.
Did you
We act we we don't object to C, D, and E either, make it easy.
Oh. Thank you. So did you issue a citation for violation of this rule?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Now can you tell me what's been marked as exhibit C?
Uh the the notice of violation citation.
Okay. And um did you take any photographs of what you observed on the night of February first twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. Here I have in front of you what what's been marked as exhibit D, can you explain what this photograph is of?
Of a DJ with his hands on the laptop
Okay.
With ear earbuds in his ear.
Okay, did you take this photograph?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And how long were you observing the DJ for?
Approximately five minutes.
Okay. Uh have you observed DJs in the past for other inspections of even other premises during your six years?
Yes.
Okay. Are you familiar with DJ work?
Yes.
Okay, and is it just through the liquor commission?
No.
Okay, how else are you familiar with the work of live DJs?
Oh, I used to be a DJ myself.
Okay. And what does that entail, what does it mean to be a DJ?
That I perform live music, pre-recorded music, live music, mixing music.
Okay. Now um I have here what's been previously marked as exhibit E. Can you tell us what that is of?
Uh the the license.
Okay, the license of
Uh champs.
Okay. Did you take this photograph?
Yes, I did.
And where was the where did you take the photograph?
Uh I don't recall.
Oh, but it was on the premises?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell us what it shows on the license as far as its um category and class?
Standard one, category one.
Okay. And it's a restaurant, right?
Restaurant.
Okay. Now did all that you testified to occur in the city and county of Honolulu?
Yes.
I have no further questions and I just reserve questions for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you, commissioners, do you have any questions over witness? If not, Mr. Kyuchi.
Uh Mr. Uwahinui, did you hear any music from outside of premises?
Not outside.
When you went inside um you said you said the violation was using a live DJ, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, did the person that was operating the laptop, did he have a microphone in front of him?
I don't recall.
Okay, was he announcing the the songs?
Uh no.
Okay, now you've been a DJ and as a DJ, when you perform as a DJ, don't you announce the songs?
No.
You don't always do that?
I don't, no.
Do you have a mic?
No.
Okay. Did this person announce the songs?
Oh objection, Aston answer.
Sir. Uh it was this person using anything except for the laptop?
The turntables were spinning, I watched him manipulate it with his hands. Uh I guess they would call it scratching.
Did you hear the scratching noise through the speaker?
No, uh I am, I never hear a scratching, but I heard the mixing going back and forth.
The mixing how on the um laptop?
Excuse me, on the laptop.
Correct. Okay. I have nothing for you.
Okay. Um any question?
Yes.
Are you referring to to the D, the left hand, which is partially blocked?
He's not scratching, he's probably on the on the fade across it.
The right hand is on the computer.
The right hand is on the computer.
Have you referred to his left hand?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's it.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Okay. Witness is here. Are you going to call, ensuring do you have any further witnesses?
Oh, no further witnesses.
Okay, I'd like to rebut or rush.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See?
Yes, I'm asked.
And to be clear, exhibits A three, I've agreed to stipulate that into it.
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay.
I just want to make clear on the record that the that the commission has accepted all of these exhibits.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe we did in the beginning, correct?
No.
I I
And to her A and B, right?
I
Exhibits A through E, which they did not object to.
Yeah, need to be accepted.
Does it does it require a motion? Well, she asked, she will have to, the prosecutor will have to ask that the commission admit all of the evidence to be accepted by the
I'm sorry.
Sure.
I initially tried to move uh A and B, but Mr. Kyuchi said that he would stipulate to all the
Right.
Exhibits into evidence.
But it has to be accepted by the commission. So can you make the request, we can
Oh yes, I moved to admit exhibits A, B, C, D, and E into evidence.
No objection.
Evidence is accepted. Mr. Kyuchi.
Yeah, we'll call Bryson Bukowski.
Please swear that the testimony given today's hearing will be the truth, hold you to nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Bryson Bukowski.
And please state your position.
I'm the general manager for Champ Sports Bar and YLI.
Were you the general manager as of uh on February first two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
And on that day, were you actually in the uh establishment?
Honestly, I don't know if I was there that day.
Okay. But you were the manager and you set the policy for the club?
Correct.
Okay. And what and what kind of uh music were you playing at Champs?
Pre-recorded music on the laptop.
And the person that you would have operate the laptop did what?
Plays that plays that pre-recorded music over my sound system through the laptop.
Okay. There's a turntable, as you can see from exhibit D, what's the purpose of the turntable?
Yeah. Well, because we got cited before or whatever for the live DJ stuff we kind of learned our lesson, I told my my people not to break down my equipment. So leave um leave my equipment there to make it look like there's there's a live DJ but he's still just playing music through his laptop.
Was he, so explaining to me how the laptop and the turntable work?
The laptop is connected to the mixer, the mixer is connected to the turntables but just because the lights are on and the tone arm is on the record itself it doesn't mean that he's actually DJing. There's a live premix I I believe it's like a six hour mix on the computer itself that he plays.
And that's what he was doing that evening?
Yes, that as far as I know, yes.
And whenever you have this person playing the um operating live music, do they have a mic in front of them?
No.
Do they have, do they announce the songs?
No.
Do they take requests?
No.
Explain to me why they don't take requests?
Because they cannot, because they cannot play the music, it's already pre-recorded. I mean, we lost a lot of clientele because of that, but it is what it is, we have to abide by the law.
Okay, and the turntables are there for what purpose?
Just for the looks.
Okay, and you heard them, the investigators testified that they saw a scratch or heard a scratch.
Uh there to me there's, if he touches it or whatever, as long as there's no music coming off of it, to me, that's okay. He can touch anything he wants on the equipment, as long as music is not coming out of that, it's okay, music is only coming out of the laptop.
Okay, and that's what the difference is, that's why I asked you how they
That's what I believe, yes.
Okay. And how long have you been operating this way in terms of how the music's?
I'm not too sure exactly, but a a a while a while because we we had a lot of complaints from anonymous caller all the time.
And did you later find out who the anonymous caller was?
Off the record, yes.
Okay.
Who? Michael Scolero.
And who is that?
Uh what do you call that? Uh he used to work for us, we had to let him go. He was a promoter and he's a disgruntled person. And I believe that's harassment.
And Mr. Kyuchi could
Yeah, I'll leave it there.
Yeah, yes, sorry, sorry, what?
I mean, yeah, no, I understand. I I have nothing further.
Mr. Bukowski, how long have you been working at Champs?
Yes. For about three years.
Okay, and all those three years you were the manager?
Yes.
Okay, and and I wanted to refer you to exhibit D, which shows the photograph, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you, did you say that his name is Michael Scolero or, oh, I'm sorry, who's what's this man's name?
No. Curtis Boloson.
Oh, okay, does he work at Champs regularly?
Um yes, he does.
Okay, is it always on Thursday nights?
No, he's um my my entertainment, pretty much like my entertainment director person.
Okay.
So he he follows what I say, he does what I want him to do, make sure everything was kosher.
And is that the only position that he holds at Champs?
Correct, he he works on Thursdays Thursdays and sometimes Saturdays also.
Is he professionally though a DJ?
Yeah, he has his own, he has his own company.
I see.
Good action entertainment. His own production company, not just a DJ, production company.
Okay.
I don't trust anybody with my sound system because my sound system is very expensive, my equipment is very expensive, I don't trust anybody.
Okay, is is Mr. Boloson, does he create the playlist every week?
We we all do. It's it's a very hard thing to create a six hour premixed mix throughout the week and you have to keep the content fresh. You know, you can't play the same thing all over all the time. Have to keep it fresh.
Okay. But um but he does provide it as amplified music throughout the premises.
My speakers, my speakers in my whole place is amplified, no matter what speaker system you you are on, it's always amplified. Even a TV speaker is amplified.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also um are there any dancing?
If people want to dance, I I can't tell them to don't move. That's how I feel about that, I I'm not too sure how that goes with that. It's kind of frustrating to me, but
Okay.
No.
Thank you. No further questions.
So so before you go, Mr. Kyuchi, can we go back a step?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
So you testified, Mr. Bukowski, that you keep the DJ turntable and equipment there so that it looks like a live DJ?
Correct.
Why, and why not just remove the DJ equipment, there's no question as to what you're doing?
Because Because I had um I had a I had a good momentum with when we did have the DJs and if I did pull the DJs out with everything, it would make us look like we didn't have anything going on. Even still yet today, I still promote having a DJ.
Do you understand that this is a restaurant license?
Yes.
That you are supposed to be operating a restaurant, not a club?
Yes, I would, yes.
All right. No nothing further.
Okay.
All right, do you have questions?
Mr. Choy.
No further questions.
Any questions? So we go on to the next slide, okay, so we'll take a recess to give a break just now.
No.
Closing party.
Unless you really want, yes.
Closing party?
Closing.
Cool, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay. So on February first twenty eighteen, the evidence has shown that the liquor commission's investigators Nui Wahi Nui and Catherine Fontaine entered the premises of Champs and found that there was a live DJ performing and they know this because he was manipulating the turntables, playing music through amplified speakers and uh investigator Catherine Fontaine recalls seeing people dancing throughout the premises. Also, there um the DJ was shown to be wearing earphones, it was clearly he was in the position of acting as a DJ. Our investigator Nui Wahi Nui also stated that in his prior inspections of other premises and also based on his personal experience as a DJ, this person after observing him for several minutes was actively participating as a DJ at Champs on February first twenty eighteen. Um as shown in exhibit E, the photograph of their license posted on the premises shows that they are a restaurant general license with a class one uh license, so they are not allowed to have live music or dancing or any kind of live entertainment and if you refer to the definitions in our rules, it says that entertainer means any musician, singer, comic, any person who operates a system that provides amplified recorded music for dancing or any person who operates a system that provides music so that customers may sing or any other person who performs a specialized talent for the customers of a licensed premises regardless of whether that person is under contract or on commission, registered or not registered, compensated or not compensated. So it it is clear that they are in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty one point two A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyuchi.
Wow, this is very similar to the previous adjudication we had. And Mr. Bukowski testified then, testified now. What he has, the person doing is simply operating the laptop system, he hasn't had, the person isn't performing, he's not announcing the songs, there's no mic in front of him. Uh there is no type of entertainment provided by the person operating system, he's just operating a music system and I think that's the difference, he testified that that's what they changed off of the first violation. So I would disrespectfully disagree, it's not having live entertainment. I don't think the definition under the rules would deemed that to be live entertainment.
Thank you, Ms. Choy.
No further comment.
No further, okay, so we will take a recess to give a break just now. Thank you. Record, thank you, Commissioner.
Uh yes, check. We find that the evidence supports the finding that the licensee has violated uh rule three dash eighty two dash thirty one point two subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Uh Ms. Choy, what is your recommendation for fine?
This is a second time violation, my recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars, second.
Two and second dollars in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye, the recommended fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars is approved. On agenda item number twenty four, Champs.
Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, to my right is Bryson Bukowski, we've already pled no contest charges one and three. As to charge two, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of deny the deny the charge. And we have one witness.
Um I will need to leave. Um we won't have time to adjudicate.
You want, who set this on another date?
Number two, so um we'll do
Let's chart, let's do charge number one.
We'll do charge number one.
Okay.
Uh and I'm sorry, uh we already accepted the no contest.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, you know what, if I can just let the witness go, is that okay?
This is Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're in a short recess. I just need to approve the recommended.
Okay, thanks, appreciate the rundown, okay.
Or may I say, oh, tell
Go ahead.
May I suggest for maybe uh practical purposes, if we're going to continue adjudicating charge two, then I I'm okay with continuing the
Yeah.
uh penalty phase for uh uh two time.
I I would actually agree with that, if that's okay with the commission.
Okay, right, okay.
Would you folks like the being certain or next available?
Be cleaner.
Um
We can do a next available because I think I have to confer with our other schedules of our other deputies.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've got and I've got a I've got some scheduling issues too.
Okay.
Okay.
So
Okay, we'll we'll continue the
We'll we'll figure it out, I mean, that's that's a bit, that's easy.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna have a motion?
Uh Yes, motion to continue agenda item twenty four for uh penalty phase uh to the next available date, second.
Uh can can you clarify that agenda item twenty four, charge number one?
We're gonna
Two and three?
Yes, so con uh motion to continue agenda item twenty four, Champs
Yeah.
charges one, two, and three
Yeah, thank you.
for uh penalty phase to the next available date, second.
Actually, number two is 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 contested.
Yeah, yeah.
Contested, so let's just let me recommend, just continue one, two, and three.
So just just just
Just make
That's why I did
Okay.
On the record to
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty four, all charges one, two, and three to the next available date, second.
Thank you, thank you, I'll work with the district.
Okay.
And more, second dollars and favor.
Aye, aye.
I just I vote aye, agenda item number twenty four, agenda items number one, two, and three are continued to the next available date. Moving into, thank you for coming, moment, moving into uh can we help uh Commissioner lead back just for the record, please. Oiling agenda item number twenty five, do we have any administrative uh matters?
No, just just a reminder that the uh the July fifth uh meeting has been posted, uploaded to our uh our YouTube channel.
None.
That is our video transcript review of what we normally prepare.
Missing among my Karen and Alan. On the YouTube channel.
Thank you.
Thank you.